Special meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Monday, October 30th, 2017. It's now five o'clock. The city clerk, please go roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassil?
Here.
Council members Clarence Fetter?
Here.
Mike Pakchawinski?
Tim Reapell?
Here.
Henry Tweetin?
Here.
Mark Demers?
Present.
Does turn and quorum. Scheduled public hearings. Number one, public hearing on 2017 Assessment Job Number One, Street Improvements. Motion to open the public hearing, please.
Move.
Second.
Chad Grassil, second by Demers. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion is carried. Public hearing is now open. Also want to note, if Mr. Emery gets going due to the issue with the publication of the notice of assessment roll will be adopted at the November 7th meeting, which extends the paper period to December 7th. Just to raise aware of that. December. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Steve Emery. Here tonight to, I guess, present to you the final assessment hearing for 2017 Assessment Job Number One, Street Improvements here in East Grand Forks. This was the final year of a three-year project. Project costs are to be paid with special assessments on your front footage or a front benefit or basically an end benefit. Want to point out that the front footage of a lot is based on the shortest platted dimension of your lot. So in cases, especially if you're on a corner or block or something like that, it's not necessarily which direction your house faces, but rather it's just based strictly on the shortest platted dimension of your lot to get. Again, as we go through the calculations, we'll be talking about front and end benefits. So we do have a little, just a real quick slideshow, just to kind of show you how front and end benefits are kind of determined. So with that, I just want to run this. So really what we do in determining the overall assessments is we take the total front footages, the total end footages for the entire project, divided by the total project cost to come up with essentially our front end benefits. So go ahead. So in this case, we're going to look at paving First Street. So if we were doing the improvements on First Street, we'll tell you which lots, in that case, the lots that showed up in yellow here, those are the lots or the benefited properties that are going to receive a front end benefit. Again, if we did the same thing, if we were going to pave Second Street, again, you can see which lots, again, would receive the front benefits, essentially the lots that are right adjacent to the street sections. Now, if we want to pave Second Avenue, you know, how does that get paid or how does that cost get maybe up? So what we do on an end benefit is we go halfway back on the block. So you can kind of see here, we go halfway back between Second and Third, and here between First and Second, basically on both sides. So now, if we wanted to pave First Avenue, again, the same scenario, we go halfway back between First and Second, and then halfway back, essentially this way, narrow street that would be over here. So I guess through this scenario, you can kind of see eventually, you know, if you were, now if you were to be third, you know, you'd go back halfway there too. So essentially, in the way it's calculated, at some point or another, everyone ultimately can kind of receive the front end benefit. So with that, with our project this past year, with the seal-coated streets, we came up on a total project cost of $272,754.11. Of that, there were about $95,142 that were non-assessable. So the total amount that was assessed was $177,611.51. So what that calculates out to is a front benefit rate of $8.87 and an end benefit rate of $2.96. Again, I should point out that the end benefit rate is one-third the front benefit rate. On the Mill and Overlay, we came up with a total project cost of $988,786.92. Of that, there was approximately $161,174 approximately that were non-assessed. So the total amount of the Mill and Overlay project that was to be assessed or that is assessed is $827,612.94, which equates to an estimated assessment rate of $43.90 per front foot benefit and $14.63 end benefit, again, one-third the front cost. As far as the assessments, they can be prepaid within 30 days of adoption of the roll, like the president said at the start of the meeting, kind of the little hiccup we had in advertising, the assessment roll actually won't be adopted until the November 7th meeting. So again, you will have till December 7th of this year to basically prepay your assessments. If they are prepaid, no interest or accrue, anything like that. So if you choose not to prepay, your assessments will be filed with the county and will be paid back over a seven-year timeframe. Essentially, when your county taxes are paid, that's when you would be paying your special assessments. If filed with the county, those assessments would accrue or interest would accrue at an interest rate of about four and a half percent interest. So those are basically kind of the two options. You can always, if you can't prepay the full amount, you can prepay a portion, and any remaining balance too would get filed with the county. So I think with that, we'll just open it up to any questions that you may have.
Anybody has any questions? If you want to come up to the podium with the microphone, state your name and your address and state your questions, if you have any. Anybody have any questions at all?
Hi, my name is Jonathan Reekman. I live at 1122 Eighth Avenue. I had a question about if they're finishing it, because they came in and did the corner of my property there, tore up a whole bunch of my yard, and then they planted mustard plant in there, but they never replaced it. And then now it's winter time and I'm not going to get grass till next spring, and there's just a tore-up yard there. So I was wondering, are they finishing it next year or what's going on and why they planted the mustard plant?
I will, I want to get your address. Can you write that down? What was your address again?
1122 Eighth Avenue.
1122 Eighth Avenue?
Yes.
Northwest?
Yes.
Okay. Because they did, they did come back and they did reseed everything this fall, or as I suppose we missed a spot, so I want to get your address.
I've seen they did the park across my street, tilled it all up, but they didn't come and do mine.
Okay.
And I didn't get new grass or anything.
We'll check, we'll check on that, and I guess if we can't get it back this year, we'll get it back later in the spring. There's a lot of seeding we did just in the last couple of weeks. It's going to be basically big organ seeding.
Yeah.
So next spring it'll take off?
Yeah.
So we'll check that out. Do you have a contact information, a phone number?
I can't, yes.
I apologize if this spot was missed, but yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at it tomorrow and get back to you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? If you want, come forward.
John Eglend, 445 River Drive, Southeast. I was just wondering how often we're going to be redoing the streets, because I believe in 2008, we were, we had the seal coat, and then now, I'm just approximate years here, but now it's the Mill and Overlay, and it's giving every 10 years. I mean, maybe, I don't know, I didn't see the, the big difference in how you chose to do a Mill and Overlay this time versus, you know, so if you're going to revisit it every 10 years, I'd like to know that now, so.
Well, again, I think just a typical cycle for the maintenance of our streets. You know, we do look, look about every 10 years. So probably in about 10 years from now, Jason Stordahl and myself will actually start going around, taking a look at the street conditions and just seeing if it is feasible, but it is typically probably a 10 to 15-year cycle, so.
So we can...
Again, to give you an answer right now, I don't know that, but...
We can kind of plan on that, though?
I think...
So what will it be next time?
What, do you get this time?
Mill and Overlay, no.
Typically then, your next time, you'd get a seal coat, so, which I think is you see...
Because, I mean, do you base it up, what, so you saw damage or, I don't get, I don't see the big difference.
The seal coating is really, it's, they're both kind of a maintenance program, but what we look at is on the Mill and Overlay streets, a lot of times you've lost the crown of your streets, so you want to try to get that crown built back in for drainage. The seal coating streets, you know, basically we're just looking to add, get oil to the streets to improve the longevity of the asphalt, improve some skid resistance.
Okay, because I got one of them unique, fun pie-shaped lots that basically front end benefit, you know, I get kind of whacked from both sides, and this year we got both overlays, so I was just, I don't know, it's, by the time I'm done, I'll have reinvested what I paid for the house.
Sure.
So, I mean, I'm just, just curious to see how often you guys are going to visit and what you consider damage and crown, because I mean, it's not obviously high-end traffic back there, so, I don't know, I'm just trying to get nosy here and figure out if I have a plan on it every 10 years, because once the house is paid for, then that's just going to be a bill that I got to incur all the time, so.
Right.
All right. Cheaper than old, folks.
I will throw in just a little information for you, too. We do run a pavement management system within the City of East Grand Forks also. That's actually judged, there's an electronic truck that comes by, videotapes and looks at all the streets.
Yeah.
Gives us back a report, plus what we put in for information into it too, and that's used to help determine what and when projects need to take place to keep the streets at a high enough level.
So do they require a warning now, like before they start in, or it's a done deal? I mean, like I said, did every 10 years, it seems pretty, or basically... Yeah, and again, I mean, we're not just going to come in 10, 10 years from now and do the project. Again, we kind of like this time, essentially we would complete a reported piece bill and we would hold improvement hearing, so that, you know, prior to us even proceeding with any plans and specifications, we'll prepare cost estimates, hold an improvement hearing, so again, you would be kind of forewarned of the activities coming up. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Steve Mould, 727 12th Street Northwest. I was gone when they dug up the curb, they laid a new curb as well as the street, and a sump line was kinked off, and so that sub-pump burned up, got into a discussion with the contractor, and he accepted no responsibility for it. So it was a couple hundred dollars just to replace the sub-pump. When they opened the pit, steam came out of the hole. The motor was that hot, so. I don't know if there's any...
I will check with the contractor. I thought, from what I recall, I thought that was, basically the contractor had talked to you, the way I understood it, was, was resolved between you two?
Yeah, he just wasn't going to take responsibility.
Okay. I will check in and see, see why he didn't take responsibility, but I apologize, like I said, I, he told me that you two had talked, that it was kind of resolved, so.
Yeah, well, I, it's on me.
Do you have a, sir, do you have a phone number? We'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, about anybody else? Anybody else have any questions for this hearing?
President, may I make a comment?
I want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak.
Yes.
Hang on a second, please. I see nobody else. Henry, you have a comment to ask? From Henry, from Henry or...
Well, there, I talked to his wife, and there's places here, there's question of water flow, and there's question of cracks possibly where there's a danger of water getting in and upsetting the flow. We have that in different places around, and I think it's imperative that the engineer, now before we get snow, start checking water flow around, so we, we don't get the situation we have in different places where water gets underneath, frost gets there, and we're replacing streets. We've got people that have had their home there for years, and we, we don't want them to take and have anything but a nice job.
Thank you, Henry. Anybody else have anything? Not entertain a motion to close the public...
Down the, all the streets and all the approaches or crossings into your driveway, when they cut for the curb to run new curb, they come up to the driveway and put a cut in, so all these cuts are open all the way down the block, water's going to go in there, it's going to really break up the cement. It's all exposed right now.
Wait.
Yeah.
Typically, in the driveway, those are saw cut, you're correct, but typically those don't get sealed, like on our concrete streets.
Right.
Where we actually saw and then we actually widened that joint, those do get sealed, but typically in a driveway, it's just a, you know, probably like an eighth inch wide saw cut.
Right.
Typically, those don't get sealed.
It's a little wider, but...
Are you talking the driveway now or the curving better through the...
Where the curb slopes down to the driveway, there's a cut, where they started with their new curving, and where they took out the old curb, put in new, and it comes into the driveway or the shoulder of the driveway. That's all just going to blow up next spring.
Typically, on the asphalt streets, especially, we don't widen and seal.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, you'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move close.
Goodbye, Demers.
Second.
Second by Reapell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. Public hearing is now closed. Move on to number two, public hearing for consideration of approving the utility variance for a replat of Lot 1, Block 2, Cooley View addition. Motion to open public hearing.
Move.
Goodbye, Grassil. Second by Demers. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to ask that Nancy Ellis, just to, again, briefly describe the project and the recommendations for the record so that we could have, have the, a record for findings and for the purposes of making a decision. After she indicates that, I'd like to have Jason Stordahl essentially advise the group why we're putting in private force main as opposed to public force main and the reasons for it.
Okay, Ms. Ellis?
Do you want me to go through every recommendation or just the ones pertaining to the plat?
Just the recommendations pertaining to the plat on the townhome, but regarding the reasons for going ahead and putting in private infrastructure for that purpose.
Okay, okay. Mr. Staus is plating two pieces of property formerly known as the, oh my goodness, it's a Monday, so I can't remember. Stokes. The north end is an preliminary plat approval for, or excuse me, five large single-family lots, the south end being the replat of Lot 1, Block 2, Cooley View for two twin home units. The property itself is fairly small when you consider the floodplain elevation and the build-to line. Looking at that, it seemed that twin homes or one single-family home would be the possibility of being built. This was rezoned to a PUD at the past city council meeting, PUD meaning planned unit development, which allows for different types of development, being single-family, two-family, those types of things. With PUD being appropriate in that you can allow for private infrastructure such as private streets, it also allows for more specific requirements for that piece of property that we can place on a concept plan, which is what Mr. Staus is planning on doing. When reviewing the access for the property, they would receive no access off of Bigland Road, only access off of 13th, with it being 120 feet back from the intersection. That being said, we did not want a through street. We also felt that because it was just essentially a driveway to those two properties, it would be considered a private access easement or a private street with a minimum right-of-way of 40 feet, and the road proper being 20 feet wide so that you can access it with a fire truck if need be. The properties have been platted with a small piece at the front that will be maintained by all four different individual owners, as well as a 30 by 30 triangle being taken by the city as an easement for future roundabout location, if necessary. The recommendations from the planning commission were to approve this as final plat with the private access easement and the private utility, which we reviewed at length for over two months, based on the elevations and the floodplain and the connection to public sanitary sewer. We felt that private sanitary sewer was the most cost-effective way for the city and for the developer to put in an injector pump. They had looked with the engineer and the city engineer at length as to try to do public sanitary sewer, as that would be more cost-effective for the developer to put in. It just wasn't feasible, which is why they are going with a private sanitary sewer and the injector pump. So based on that, the planning commission recommended that we approve it as a final plat with making sure that the floodplain elevation is on there, that any sort of requirements for structures, sheds, fences be included on that PUD, that there was also a townhome declaration that was approved by council that requires maintenance and repair work costs be associated solely to the property owners, and then any sort of work that was done within public right-of-way, done to public utilities, those natures, would be at the cost of those in the townhome association. There's also a clause in that that would state that the city has the right to go in and enforce that declaration if the property owners in itself don't enforce it. There are some minor public works recommendations, as well as water and light, that will be addressed before the work goes on. It's kind of more of a working document during the building and construction of the properties. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you have any questions for Nancy?
Mr. Demers? Thank you, Nancy. Or thank you, Mr. President. Nancy, so backing up to your original statement, you said that the reason for the PUD is so that you can allow for...
Private street.
Private utilities, but our ordinance...
Private street.
Right, but because our ordinance specifically says no private utilities.
Utilities, yes.
Right, okay. Now, to get to this variance, does this have to pass the seven, or the same, like, five-point variance test as any other variance or...
No, because a utility variance is very different than the variances we issue from a planning standpoint, because we're not really varying from setbacks or even a use or lot size, those types of things. It's strictly a utility variance that they would be getting from the city to construct private utility, which is why I struggled a little bit with Ron trying to figure out how we would in fact call this a variance, because we're really only varying, varying from what is a standard or a requirement in our subdivision, and even states in our subdivision ordinance, those things can be reviewed and changed. I think this one is based on simply, which would be, again, difficult, it would be at the cost of the city to provide that public utility, and it just wasn't feasible based on the idea that it would cost the city as a whole to do that. We felt that private sanitary sewer was the more acceptable option for those four properties, because the cost-benefit ratio for the city wasn't there. So it's, it's really a confusing type of ordinance. It's really more of a findings of fact to prove that this is a different, unique situation than normal plats that we receive. Their water and light are public utilities. Those, we, we didn't have any issues trying to get the elevations and things to work. The, the sanitary sewer was the one where we were, were having issues, so.
So two, or a couple of questions off of that. Why are we only looking at a variance for the one portion and not the other, then?
Because we haven't done a, we haven't done a final plat approval.
Okay, so it's just we haven't gotten to that.
Yes, we haven't gotten to that one yet. Yep.
On the other side. Okay, and then, as far as the cost, all sanitary sewer in the city, I guess, ultimately is the responsibility to put in by the city, right? But it's assessed back to the property owner, right?
Not, I'm, I'm not sure how that works. This would be the private leads to the specific homes, and I think that cost is incurred by the developer. I think it's the main lines that is, that the city then takes the responsibility and assesses back to all of the properties. So if there was a lift station or something like that, either the city would take on that full chunk, or it would be divided over a number of properties rather than five or four, because it would really be four people.
Or 15 if it was divided that way.
Right, right, right. But typically, I don't think we have any lift stations that serve only 10 properties. So, so the costs associated with that per individual would be quite a bit more than it would be if we were looking at blocks of properties.
That's it for now. Thank you.
And also, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, in this, in this situation is a unique situation, and in the future, if we're looking at this, this is not setting a precedence that we would allow this to keep going and do other projects like this unless it's a unique situation that cost-rehibited the city again to a certain point. I mean, maybe, maybe I'm asking it correctly, but...
I think the property became unique when, after the flood of 1997, we located the schools where they are located. Bigland Road became the type of road that it is now that the city has, you know, accepted, plus the building of 13th, which also became an arterial road, which we added specifically at the time of 1997 to connect the school and then again also lead over into Grand Forks, because Greenway Boulevard, 13th lines up with 17th on the Grand Forks side. So it was also a future connector arterial, which now has solely become a collector, I should say. And so I think that combination, plus the idea that the Cooley is also going to be maintained for a floodplain purposes, for baggage, it kind of excluded that property from being developed, like the north properties on Bigland, where they had access off of Bigland Road, where you could have certain lots, where you weren't as concerned about the elevations. It was, it's just, it kind of made it a lot more unique than it is, than it was previously. That being said, anywhere else in the city where it would be considered new, based on the elevations, the fact that there isn't any floodplain around there, I, I think that would be more of a cookie cutter type development, where this is more of a unique development because of those factors.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. President. But there's nothing precluding from someone, another developer, anywhere else in town, subdividing or... subdividing or taking a chunk of land, trying to get it PUD, dividing it in a couple of lots and then doing their own infrastructure?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions for Nancy or for Mr. Galstead?
I would just ask Jason just to comment briefly on the cost prohibitive nature of it.
Yeah, I think Nancy pretty much touched on it, but it... So after looking at it, we found that the elevations for the site, it wouldn't work for a typical gravity sewer mains. We'd have to do something other than that. The other option then would be to install a lift station. And it'd be cost prohibitive, I think, for the city to do that. I guess that was a recommendation of our city engineer as well. After looking at it, there's just a few properties. So to construct a lift station just to service them, that wouldn't make too much sense. So, any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mr.?
Just one more, kind of off the cuff, just curiosity. If there would be all sorts of other development around there and in the perfect scenario, another lift station were already added to serve this other development, any way to come back and tie in if elevations would allow for that and bypass that pump at that point? Or is that just impossible?
The way it's set up right now, there wouldn't be no scenario like that. We just have, we already have other lift stations established.
Yeah.
And it just wouldn't fit into where they are, so...
Got you. Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions for Nancy, Jason, or Mr. Galstead? Seeing none, thank you. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Both. Moved by Grassl.
Second.
Second by Demers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Public hearing is now closed. Move on to new business. Consider approving the utility variance for replat of Lot 1, Block 2, Cooley View addition property.
Both.
By Grassl.
Second.
Second by Reapel. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Galstead?
Yes.
Grassl?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number four, consider approving the final plat of replat of Lot 1, Block 2, Cooley View addition along with all staff recommendations with a twin home development declaration.
Both.
Moved by Grassl. Second by Reapel. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. President, I believe Megan has handed out a declarations that was drafted. The mod... This is what would end up being recorded once the plat has been filed and prior to Mr. Staus transferring those properties to any other owner so that it would actually be recorded prior to that timeframe. The language that was included today at, after discussion is in, I believe it would be like paragraph two subdivision or sub-paragraph three, which essentially just says that if the private infrastructure, meaning the sewer, isn't repaired by the townhome, the city has got the legal standing to be able to go in there and repair it at their expense. And that was a requirement on the...
At whose expense?
At the property owner's expense. And based upon that, it's my recommendation to go ahead and approve this.
Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Galstead?
Yes.
Grassl?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Motion is carried. Number five, consider approving replat of Lot 1, Block 2, Cooley View addition, PUD, concept development plan, along with all staff recommendations.
Both. Second.
Moved by Reapel, second by Vetter. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Galstead?
Yes.
Grassl?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Motion is carried. Number six, consider adopting resolution number 17-10-78, authorizing city engineer to submit an application to MINDOT for the 2017 local road improvement program funds for roundabout at the intersection of Bigland Road and Reinhardt Drive.
Both.
Second by Demers?
May I make a comment?
Hang on a second, Henry.
Yes.
Moved by Demers, second by Vetter?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Mr. President and members of the council, I've had the opportunity of seeing a lot of roundabouts. I saw one three fervor of Grand Forks. I've seen him in Twin Cities. I've seen Fargo-Moorhead. The thing that will happen there is you've got four nice holes. You've got people who live there and they like it. They're seniors. They're people who are very influential in developing a first-class senior center. And what you're going to do is destroy their life. The other thing's going to happen is you're going to have to take four houses. People can say they can take part of it. You destroy property value. And you've got the convenience store. You're going to take and possibly get sued for loss of business, devaluation of business. You're going to goof up the parking lot on the senior center. The senior center is tremendous asset to this community. And I'm strongly opposed to it. You can go down the highway, Bigland Highway, and that's where it should be. And frankly, if some of you people met some of these people out there, you wouldn't even consider this. I can't understand why you're going to go here. I told the engineers last week, if they went down the highway, fine, I'd support it. But you're going to end up probably with a million dollars. Where's the million dollars going to come from? We don't have money to extend the industrial park. You've got a man back there that's working, trying to expand the industrial park. It's real fine to vote for something, but you better understand two things. How does it affect us financially? How does it affect the people that take and live there? I've got friends that live all around that area. And you're going to find out that it's a mistake. This is a good time to not make mistakes.
Mr. Vetter?
Thank you, Mr. President. In my time here, we've done a number of studies on different roads. And we did do a study on Bigland Road. One of the recommendations was a roundabout at Bigland and Reinhardt. I find it hard to believe that we can't rely on the experts that we hire to do these studies. We spend a lot of money on them. I, for one, am going to rely on those studies. And they said we need a roundabout at Reinhardt and Bigland. I don't think that we need to take any property to put that roundabout in, and that's yet to be seen. So for you to fear monger and say we have to buy out four people is uncalled for. As far as Orton's, I think the easier access in and out of Bigland and Reinhardt and Fifth is going to be a benefit to their business. And as far as I'm concerned, the constituents that I represent continually complain that they can't access Bigland Road. And this roundabout will help them access Bigland Road, and therefore, I am for this project. The dollars... This is a grant for up to a million dollars to help us build this thing. The last estimate that we had was just over a million dollars to build it. And so therefore, city money, if we get approved for this grant, there shouldn't be that much outlay in city money to build it. So again, I'm going on record to support this project. Thank you.
Come here, Henry.
I just also want to make it clear, the reason this thing keeps coming back to life. In this case, there's nobody sitting up here and no city staff people that are actively trying to resurrect this. The reason we're having this conversation right now is we became aware of some funds that are administered through the state. There's some federal funds also. A funding source kind of came out of nowhere as a possibility of doing this. So there's nobody here that's just keeps trying to bring it back as a source of irritation to the group or to the community. If it's going to happen, we'll try to do it as absolutely affordably as we can, bringing in outside dollars and really minimizing the impact on the local taxpayers. It's still going to be years away, if at all. But that's what brought it back to the conversation is this pool of funds that came almost to us. I mean, we became aware of it. It's competitive, we'd have to apply and may have a shot at building this with minimal local cost. It's the only reason we're having this conversation again right now.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Mr. Reapel?
Voting on this doesn't guarantee that we're doing the actual roundabout. We're just basically applying for funding, which it's up to a million dollars. But as I said, it could be split. $200,000 per community, $100,000 per community. So there's no problem applying for the funding. But once we figure out if we get any, that's if we get any, then it's, we figure out what it's going to cost us to do this project. If the cause is cost prohibitive, the answer is no. We have to be fair with that, too.
Yep.
Alls we're doing is taking a look at this. Voting yes or no doesn't mean you're voting for the project.
Ms. Ellis?
And just to be clear, the state of Minnesota just came out with a study today stating that roundabouts, and they've studied all 150-some in the state right now, found to be safer than a majority of your signalized intersections and your full four-way stops. So I'm just letting you know that right now, if we were to do something, we'd have to go through the intersection control evaluation, or ICE. And once you go through that, obviously, you have to prove that a roundabout isn't necessary before you look at those other options. So right now, kind of our option there, if we feel that it needs to be considered because it's a safety hazard, our two best options right now are a roundabout or the do-nothing approach. So that kind of puts us in that scenario right now. We did have an ICE conducted there. And the recommendation from the intersection control was also a roundabout before a signalized intersection or stop signs. So the fact that we're even trying to ask for this right now is kind of what we're at at this point, you know? So if we, if we're looking at trying to improve it in terms of access and safety, this is our option. So this, and if we don't receive the funds, then it would be, go back to a do-nothing approach. So we wouldn't be looking at any other options at this time based on what we're required to do for Minnesota DOT, so...
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Galstead?
Yes.
Grassl?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
No.
Motion is carried. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Both.
Everybody Grassl, second by Demers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion is carried. Mean is now adjourned. Go downstairs, please, yes.